... meeting and successor agency meeting will come to order for August 12th. Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call on Commander Hanline, who is the San Gario Valley Commander of this region.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Council members, city manager, residents. I am now the commander for this region in East Patrol. We cover six stations and I have three of them. I have Altadena, Temple City, and San Dimas. So if there's anything you guys ever need, please reach out to me. I know the fourth district might have some problems, but other than that.
You know what? Would you mention to this audience who your partner in crime, partner is for this region?
Well, my old partner used to be Ryan Vienna, Councilmember Ryan Vienna. And he recently got promoted and took my spot as captain. So congratulations to him. He's gonna have some big shoes to fill because I'm gonna keep a microscope on him to make sure everything's going right. But as I know, he runs the city very well and as long with the mayor and the rest of the council members, then he's gonna do a great job for the station that he's assigned to. So it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting me. And if you have any questions for me, I know we're gonna go through a process in San Dimas Station very soon. So hopefully that candidate, whoever is selected, is also gonna continue on with the great legacy that the past station commanders have done also. So thank you very much for having me here. I appreciate it. We need to get on the golf course a couple more times, hopefully. And hopefully, hopefully there's some more golf players out here. I don't mind playing golf with any one of you. I'm ready. Good, good, I like it.
Commander, would you mention who your partner, commanding partner is and who is actually Captain Vienna's boss?
Oh, right now, it's the old station commander, Afarashnia. Remember him? Not too long ago, and that's Ryan's new boss now. So I'm gonna have a talk with him too and make sure we keep a good eye on him.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you very much. And you guys have a wonderful evening. Everyone here have a wonderful evening and thank you for having me here.
Oral Communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on the public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes.
The first speakers are Nancy Munoz and Amy Liu with San Dimas Library.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Munoz, the teen and adult librarian at San Dimas Library. As you know, our library manager recently retired and we've had a nearby manager, Dina Malakoff, filling in on a temporary basis. Unfortunately, her home library, Charter Oak, is in need of her leadership, so she will no longer be helping out at San Dimas. However, we are lucky enough to now have Amy Liu filling in as our temporary library manager until the position is filled permanently. I'd like to introduce you all to Amy.
Good evening, council members and city staff. I'm Amy Liu. I'm gonna be at the library. Feel free to come by and visit me. Very happy to be here and be with you tonight.
Thank you and congratulations.
The, excuse me, are San Dimas High School students speaking on high school, an update on high school life?
Good evening, Mayor Budar, city council, city manager, staff and members of the audience. My name is Jocelyn River.
And I'm Andy Nuno, and we are the students at San Dimas High School. Tonight, we are here to tell you what's going on with the Saints. Starting with the arts, over the summer, our facilities department made some improvements to the classrooms. Our theaters department is up and ready already and has a parent meeting at the end of the month to review their season. Our band has been practicing over the past few weeks and they sound great and ready for the fall season. Moving on to athletics, our gym recently received a sound system upgrade and got new lights in the gym. Our fall teams have been working hard at practice and are ready for the fall season. And we have our first scrimmage for football this Friday at Diamond Bar High School. Our girls volleyball and girls flag football teams take on our rival Bonita at the end of the month.
In terms of academics, we just had 1,250 students go through our school registration yesterday and today. They got their books, computers, schedules, and are ready for the first day of school, which is Monday. We are so proud to say that last school year, we had our highest AP pass rate in school history at 76%. And finally, activities. We are gearing up for a great first day of school. Our seniors will be putting on their senior sunrise and ASB has planned a fun-filled day for all our students. Back to school night is on August 25th and the school will be open for parents to meet their students' teachers. Last but not least, our school did get a new coat of paint and also new roofs on some buildings. We want to welcome our new admin Kate Jackson back to San Dimas High. She is a graduate from SDHS and we are glad to have her return home and serve our students.
Thank you for your time tonight. And we will see you again next month. Thank you.
The next speaker is Doran Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm joined tonight by Vicky Malashevsky. We've nowhere six foot Vicky. And I'm here in my role as the Chair of your San Dimas 2026 Committee. The countdown is on for Americans 250th Independence Day combined with our city birthday, which will be happening here in San Dimas, not on July 4th, but actually on July 3rd, because we don't want to compete with other, the other great events that are happening in the community. We're continuing to work really hard on planning what I believe will be a truly phenomenal event. Since I was last here, we've signed up Golden State Water as a major sponsor. We're super excited to have them as part of the team. We've also signed the contract for the drone show. So we're going to have a drone show that night. It's on. Right now, we've got 250 drones that are gonna be flying high in the sky over Civic Center Park, but we're hoping to raise the resources to get up to 400, maybe even 500 drones. So we're still doing a lot of fundraising, still seeking sponsors to make this even better than it's already planned right now. Vicky has stepped up. She stepped up as one of our early sponsors, as a platinum sponsor, a real leader in the community, a real leader in terms of supporting us. And Vicky, Vicky didn't want to speak tonight, but I told her she had to come up for a quick minute. Why did you do that?
I love San Dimas. I think it's great. I love it.
There we go. And really, I think what Vicky brings to, to our work here, not only as a sponsor, but also as a member of the community and of the committee, is the way our community does come together and celebrate great events like our 250th Independence Day. And again, it's going to be both the 250th Independence Day plus San Dimas's birthday, and it's gonna be just truly, truly spectacular. We thank you for your support. Thanks to the great city team for all the work that they're doing, all the support that they're providing, again, coming together. I'll have additional updates as we go along. We're gonna keep building momentum. It's gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all the speaker cards that were turned in.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Mr. Wasserman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm Scott Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just a few program updates here. Want to remind folks, fall swim lessons are coming up and registration begins August 22nd. These tend to fill up quick, so we recommend that you register quickly once that opens. Music in the park. We have our final music in the park tomorrow night, 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock at Civic Center Park, coincides with the farmer's market. It's a completely free event. We've been having a blast all summer. This is our last concert. We hope that folks will join us for this one. This should be really special. The band will be Johnny Come Lately, which is a rockabilly band, kind of 50s music. Our Cars and Coffee event, we have our last of three events, this Saturday, August 16th. This will be from 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock a.m., the parking lot right behind the Walker House. That's also a free event. Come out and see some classic cars, enjoy some coffee. It's a great fun, family-free activity. And finally, we have a Run and Scared event that's coming up. That's our annual 5K event, One Mile Family Fun Run and Toddler Trot. Registration is now open. For this, this event takes place on September 27th. I should have mentioned that. Registration is now open. I know last year, we had a record number of runners. We're expecting a lot of runners again this year. It should be a really great event and we hope that folks will join us out there.
Mr. Wasserman, could you give us about a one-minute synopsis of last week's event, the birthday celebration, the success story of the program?
I can, thank you. With a lead like that, calling it a success story, I like that. I can, I can elaborate on that. This year, we combined the city birthday with one of our concerts in the park. And, you know, like any new event, you're never sure how it's going to go. We had a great turnout. The park was packed. We had a great concert. We had Cold Duck, which is one of our biggest draws in the band. We had cupcakes. My personal highlight was hearing the city council sing Happy Birthday. But it was a fantastic event and we will wait and see if council would like to do it the same way again next year.
Well, it's gonna be combined with the 2026 event.
Correct.
I think it is already.
It is already set. You're right. It's already said.
I'm sure that it'll be successful.
It will be very successful and as, as Mr. Barnes mentioned, we have a collaborator for this event, so we'll have more activities, more things to do, more things to look at. It really should be a lot of fun for families.
I personally am waiting to hear from your staff to look at the overview for the entire Music in the Park celebration and the farmer's market. I noticed that when, when I gave the state of the city, we talked about the percentages of, of how these events have grown. And quite honestly, after watching this last 10, 11 weeks, those percentages had to have gone up and I'm, I'm excited to hear what those are.
Thank you. Yeah, they've, they have gone up. We can certainly report that out, but we've enjoyed great attendance this summer at our summer concerts. I think as far as the money that we spend in recreation for special events, this is probably the biggest bang for the buck, combining it with the farmer's market. People seem to really enjoy it and we enjoy throwing a good party for the community when, when people turn out.
I think most of the council will agree with you.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that there was no one else wishing to speak at that, this, this time, but I'll give you one more shot. Okay, we'll move on. We'll go to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
Move approval.
Mayor, I'd like separate discussion on item, item number five, please.
Okay. Do I have a second on the other?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item number five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent item 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 are approved, 5-0. Okay. Report on item number five, Mr. Wasserman?
Yes, I wasn't sure if the council member had questions.
Yes, I just wanted for the audience's benefit and anybody watching or looking back on this meeting to see what this is. So the title is Approve and Ratify Revisions to Field Allocation Policy. I have discussed with staff a bit prior to these changes and a lot of time has gone into these and a lot of consideration. And I just would like to hear what those changes are so that everyone knows upfront.
Sounds good. So I'll go through these kind of methodically and briefly and please stop me if you have any questions. The first change that we're recommending, there was some verbiage. When council first approved the policy in 2019, there was verbiage that gave the Director of Parks and Recreation the authority to make administrative changes and revisions to the policy as long as it didn't affect the fees. I'm not sure why this was taken out. We're just asking that it be placed back in. I should note that when we make, this is a really good example. If I find the need to make changes to the policy and I have a very short timeframe, I'm always going to bring that back to council, just so that you know what's happening with your policy that, that you approved. The second, that was section 2.2. Section 7.7 involves not scheduling field use on federal holidays. And we just specified what those holidays are. That's designed to give residents a little break. Section 7.8, I added some verbiage, just clarifying that the use of amplified sound needs to comply with the regulations in the San Dimas Municipal Code. Previously, for amplified sound, there was no guidance at all. Section 7.9, making user groups aware of their obligations to screen staff, board members, and volunteers under California state law. They have been doing this, but we think that we should put it in the policy just so they can see it and remind them. Section 7.710, requiring scheduling changes to be submitted in writing. When we're dealing with 22 sports youth organizations, we must have everything in writing. It gets too confusing if people are calling and texting and so forth. The last provision, section 13.1, involves revising the dormancy period. So previously, for many years, we had a dormancy period on our fields that was June and July and also December and January. And what we're finding is that the teams are asking us to keep the fields open at least until through July in case they have postseason play. The season typically ends in late June, perhaps early July, but for some of those holdouts that are very successful in local tournaments or All-Stars or state competitions, they go further and they still need a field to practice on. So that's the purpose of section 13.1.
Okay. I think, so just to make sure, with three months dormancy period, we feel that staff has ample time to make sure our fields are up to par and in good condition?
Absolutely. And that's, absolutely. We, that should be plenty of time for us to complete all the seasonal maintenance. The fields and the turf should be able to, to come back in that amount of time.
So there's no consequence, it seems, to going to the three-month period? And it also seems to open up the field for the use of the neighborhood, kids, adults alike, in the month of July, whereas previously, we may not have allowed that?
Yes, correct.
And then, one more thing. So for these youth groups that are really excelling, it allows them to continue to practice on that field for their All-Star program or whatnot. However, it will greatly, the number of teams practicing will go down greatly because it will only be those teams that have advanced.
That's correct. That's exactly right. Any usage in July would probably be a lot lighter than the regular season.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to go ahead and make that transparent. Does any of the other council have questions?
I have two. Thank you, Mr. Director. My first question is, how does this policy compare to field use policies in other nearby cities? Is it pretty similar? Do you, what kinds of differences are there, if there are any?
You know, it's, it's very similar. Most cities have a very similar system of wanting to reward organizations that serve a greater number of residents. So they have a very similar structure in their policy to do that. The other policies, you can find, it's very similar to other cities. You can find a lot of the same policies in our, you know, the content from our, our policy in other policies in other cities. They're all pretty similar because we all experience similar issues with field allocations.
What other cities did you consult in looking, in, in developing this, the policy for our city?
I was not present in 2019 when we did this, when the policy came forward with the city council. However, since then, I know that we've looked at several, we've looked at several policies. We looked at the city of Laverne, I think Glendora. We did some of the ones right around us, Walnut. I'm sure that there were others, but, but that is what we, we generally survey theirs to see if there's anything that's really brilliant that they've included that we'd like to replicate.
And then my last question is, is when you have a field allocation policy, do you ever see field allocation policies that are maybe specific to one park and different for another, or are they usually all the same across the city?
It's usually all the same across the city. The exception would be some cities have some organizations with whom they enter into a more specific long-term contract for the use of a facility or a field. Ours is more in the, the former category, which is, it's, it's blanket. We do it the same way at all the facilities for all the teams throughout the city.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Anyone else having any other questions? I'll entertain a motion on consent item number five.
So moved.
Second.
Need to further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries 5-0 on the consent item number five. That'll be the completion of the consent calendar. We'll go to other business. Approve the San Dimas City, Citywide Bicycle Master Plan 2025 and adopt Resolution 2025-44, approving the citywide bicycle plan, master plan. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Peter Jacoi. I'm the Assistant Engineer in the Department of Public Works. Tonight's staff report is on the San Dimas Citywide Bicycle Master Plan 2025 update and the proposed adoption of Resolution 2025-44. This plan updates the city's 2011 bicycle master plan with a clear vision to improve and expand bicycle routes citywide. It was developed with input from the community, transportation experts, and city staff. The plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee, and was most recently presented to the city council at the June 24th study session. This plan focuses on making our streets safer and more connected for everyone, whether you're walking, biking, or driving, creating and improving connections to neighborhoods, public transportation, parks, and shopping centers, and positioning the city to compete for grant funding to support future street improvements. We've also made strong efforts to, to preserve street parking in response to community feedback. City staff recommends approving the San Dimas Citywide Bicycle Master Plan 2025 update and adopting Resolution 2025-44. There's no physical impact at this time. Future projects will return to council individually for approval and funding. However, having an updated bicycle master plan is critical to remain competitive for grant funding. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to invite Rawad Hani from GTS Consulting to present the plan in more detail.
Thank you, Peter, and good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to start, first of all, my name is Rawad Hani with the GTS. I'm a principal at GTS and I'd like to start by thanking staff for the collaborative effort throughout this process of updating the bicycle master plan, not just Public Works represented by Peter and Cherry for their guidance, but also members, representative members from, from other departments, Parks and Rec, planning, and city administration and others. So the plan, the reason why we updated the plan is because the last time this update happened was in 2018. And since then, there has been significant changes, whether it is related to best practices or regional developments, or really kind of priorities that the city has. So this plan is really to kind of respond to all of these changes that happened since then and to the community, new community patterns and travel patterns, as well as safety concerns that, that have taken place. The plan in front of you is divided into seven main sections, really kind of an introduction, existing conditions, community outreach, which we'll elaborate a bit further on, and then setting goals and policies, the programs, and then the network and project development, which we'll dive a bit into it, as well as project prioritization. There has been significant community engagement, both digital and in person. We had an interactive map, which saw over 1,000 people coming in and visiting that interactive map. We had a survey where we had over 100 responses between the survey and the comments on the map, as well as the project website that provided project overview and updates. In collaboration with the city, the project was also, or the whole process and the plan process was, was also advertised on social media. We also get over 3,000 kind of visits for, for the, or 3,000 eyeballs, I should say, on the social media postings. In terms of the in-person community engagement, there were two public workshops that took place that gathered input from the community and these were incorporated in the plan. Also, we participated at the last year's Halloween's Spoktacular, as well as the Holiday Extravaganza. We distributed business cards, which had the QR code for the project website. We engaged with around 300 people and following the, these events, we saw really kind of a spiking in the traffic to the website and kind of more people answering the survey, adding their comments to the website, and so on, so forth. As I mentioned earlier, really, this is a collaborative effort by all means. There were kind of progress meetings throughout the process that involved different members from the city, representing various departments that you see them over here. The draft plan was presented to various advisory bodies, including Parks and Rec, Traffic Safety Committee, Planning Commission, as well as, as Peter just mentioned, the city council study session, overall positive feedback and recommendations for adoption. In terms of the, getting a bit into the details of the bicycle master plan and kind of the proposed facilities, before getting into the proposed facilities, we just want to highlight quickly the different types of classes that the, that are typically the industry and Caltrans utilize to differentiate between different types of bicycle routes. The first one is the shared use path, which is a Class 1 facility. This is a separated facility, used primarily by bicyclists and pedestrians. Cars are not allowed on such facilities. Second type of facility is what is referred to as Class 2 bicycle lanes. This is similar to what you see on San Dimas Avenue. Usually, it's a painted line that separates the travel lanes from the bicycle. the, uh, travel lanes from the bicycle, uh, travel, bicycle lanes. The third type of bicycle facilities is what is referred to as bicycle routes, these are also Class 3 facilities, they used to be referred to, or still referred to as shadows, in the sense that the bikes and the cars, they share the road, and you see them a lot on local streets, usually lower speed streets. And the most recent type of bicycle facility, which wasn't probably present in the 2011 Bicycle Master Plan, or even at that time, is the, uh, cycle track, or what is referred to as protected bikeway, it is similar to a Class 2 facility, except there is a physical separation between the travel lane and the bike lane. So, with that quick overview of bicycle classes, uh, here's a map that shows the proposed bikeways in the city, uh, the solid lines are the existing facilities, and the dotted lines are the proposed bikeways. I'll note just a couple of them, Bonita Avenue, which is a combination between Class 2 and Class 3 facilities, and this provides really a needed east-west connection in the city, especially connecting to the metro station. Sianega Avenue, also a proposed Class 2 facility, which connects, provides that connectivity from the, from Bonita, uh, to, uh, to avoid in some shape or form using Arrow, which is really kind of a, uh, more of an auto-oriented, or a car-oriented roadway. San Dimas Avenue was recently implemented by the city, it was in the 2011, uh, plan, and was recently implemented as a Class 2 bicycle facility, this also continues the north-south connection. There is also a proposed Class, Class 1 facility, just north of Bonelli Park, within the existing right-of-way, that, that provides a lower-stress connection north of the park, and provides, really kind of provides the connectivity between metro stations, and the park, and the facilities that are over there. And south of the city, just south, Villa Verde, is a proposed Class 2 facility for the most part of it, again, providing an east-west connection, which currently does not exist. There are other Class 3 facilities, as you've seen on, on the dotted blue lines that, that have been proposed, these facilities are really essential, uh, to avoid the, uh, the higher traffic routes, but also they kind of contribute some sort of traffic calming to those, uh, lower, to those residential streets, or reducing kind of the speed on these roads, and so on. In terms of the prioritization and phasing methodology, when we looked at prioritizing these projects, we looked at really two tiers, the first tier is looking at closing the gaps, in the sense of connecting, connecting and enhancing the safety of the bicycle network, emphasizing those projects that receive the highest community support, and providing really a complete network, so that you can travel from one location to another without kind of having, uh, major gaps in between. And then the second one is the typical, uh, Caltrans, uh, benefit cost analysis, whereby we identify the benefits based on the safety, safety, uh, aspects, and the crash reduction factors, and then the costs based on estimates of per-mile estimates for different classes. And then the phasing, uh, into three, three phases, short-term, medium-term, and long-term, the short-term are those facilities which are easier to implement, these can be kind of implemented by a simple, uh, paints, these could be the Class 3 facilities, bicycle boulevards, and bicycle routes, and then the medium-term are those that require a bit more engineering, a bit more study, uh, primarily kind of Class 2 facilities, and the longer-term facilities are those that, uh, require even more kind of engagement, more discussions, more kind of outreach, even some, in some cases might require kind of some sort of environmental considerations, these are the longer-term measures. With that, again, I'd like to thank staff, and thank you very much for your attention, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, we'll close the staff report.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries five zero, thank you very much for all the work you guys have done, I know this has been a long RDS task, thank you. We'll move on into, uh, oral communications, members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair, anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Okay, don't be shy, because this could be the shortest meeting in history. Okay, here he comes.
I'm a resident of San Dimas for 35 years, I live up in Dale Park Drive, below the Brusada, uh, construction zone, um, I just have concerns about the brush just behind my house, because I live on the side up against the foothills, uh, that property was taken over by Brusada, and that whole development, you guys added a catch basin, which was required, I guess, for the construction of this thing, nobody has told us who's maintaining that back area for the brush, now granted, the catch basin does a pretty good job as a fire break, because it's all concrete, but the other part is all brushed, it hasn't been maintained or been cleared, I'm being told by the Fire Department, LA Fire Department, I'm assuming our county Fire Department, uh, to make sure that I keep my brush cleared in my property, because I have a pretty big piece of parcel, um, which I do, of course, and I get approved by the LA Fire Department, saying that I've done my due diligence, but why isn't anybody dealing with all the brushes behind my house that is going to cause a major problem, considering what we just saw, what happened in Altadena, where my brother, who lost a house up there, after completely rebuilding it, well, that's another story, but, but my concerns are, what's going on with this brush clearance, it used to be done on a regular basis when the person that owned the property before Brusada took it over, and they were required to clear the brush yearly, and it was done on a yearly basis, um, now it's not even being dealt with. They did it once, only because one of our neighbors finally complained about it, and someone came and did it, I don't know if it's the county owns it, you guys own it, or Brusada still owns it, but somebody's got to keep up with this brush clearance, because of what we've been going through on all these fire issues and stuff, that's my only concerns, and that's what I want to do.
I'll tell you what, somebody's going to raise their hand, and, and they'll come and talk to you, and...
And that was everything, who do I talk to about this?
The guy standing up, right there.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
All right, but thank you for your concern, and we're, we're sorry that you even had to come here for that concern, but thank you.
I just figured it was a good, you know, way to at least make you guys aware of what's going on there, what's not going on there, and...
I'm quite sure there'll be questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the city manager's report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, city council, a couple of updates tonight, the Villa Verde Park, the swing set at Villa Verde Park is reopened, um, to the public, it was closed to, for some repairs due to a leak, um, that we had, and replacing the resilient playground surface underneath the swing set, additionally, we've gone around and made repairs to the walking track, which had been completed. Foothill Gold Line, A-line extension opening, LA Metro has announced that the A-line extension to Pomona is scheduled to open Friday, September 19th, 2025, I know a lot of dates have been thrown out there, but that's the latest and greatest that we have, um, Metro is currently conducting pre-passenger testing, so you're going to see the, the arms go up and down, and, and I know there's concerns about the signal, signaling at San Dimas and Bonita, we are working on that, changes were made, I believe, today, um, they're trying to make it as efficient as possible to get people across the tracks. Two events that I want to acknowledge, one was talked about earlier, so I won't talk about the birthday, but we also had, uh, our National Night Out event, that was a great success, and thank you to all those 10 public safety, um, partners for putting on this event, uh, to promote community safety, um, it was great to see a lot of residents out there, the, the sheriff was actually there for over, over an hour, um, mingling with our residents, so it was great to see that, I won't elaborate on the birthday, I thought, I thought it was a great event, um, and lastly, um, our Public Works Department has been running social media campaigns to remind the community that with back-to-school in session, drivers should stay alert around, um, school zones, um, watch for crossing guards, um, and stop for school buses, additionally, the new state daylighting law is in effect, extra caution is advised to ensure pedestrian safety, the daylighting law prohibits stopping, standing, parking a vehicle within 20 feet of the approach, um, the approach side of any unmarked or marked crosswalk, um, to improve visibility for anybody crossing the street, so just want to remind, um, residents about that, uh, as school comes into session, and make sure that our, our kids are safe out there going back to school, with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, council.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? We'll move it to the city attorney.
Mayor, I'll give my closed-session report, the successor agent, city, city council as successor agency did meet in closed session before this meeting today, and the one item that was on the closed-session agenda, a significant exposure to litigation item, the successor agency board gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action, that's my only report, thank you.
Thank you. Members of the city council, council members report on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB 1234. Any meetings? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council requests for future items. Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no request for future items, but I did want to compliment staff on their excellent work on the city birthday, it was well-attended, it was also, as the public knows, a bit of a risk, because we combined Music in the Park with the city birthday, and it turned out to be a success, I would say, so really want to thank staff and others for working through that, and for the public for attending and making it quite an event, it was a lot of fun, all of us were there and enjoyed interacting with the public, uh, it was already said earlier, but I did want to, I believe, we celebrate successes of people in the city, and I did want to again salute Captain Ryan Vienna for his promotion, it was hard-earned, and, um, it's, it's a major achievement, we are all proud to have a member like you on our council, and congratulate you on your effort. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Councilman Vienna.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Eric and my colleagues, I, uh, very humbled and honored for not just the selection, but your guys' support all the way through it, and your, your patience and support, it was a very long process, and a very complicated, uh, several months, uh, while I was doing, uh, the duties that, uh, my service allowed, pulled me to do. Uh, I wanted to take a moment to, one, acknowledge staff, I think, National Night Out, although I was away at, uh, my professional duties, uh, participating in a National Night Out, uh, I will say, I heard so many positive comments about National Night Out, with the sheriff's station, with all of the turnout, uh, the sheriff, I know, made a stop by, our division chief, uh, I understand also was present, um, I think the continued support and partnership that has always been here in the city, between law enforcement, uh, as well as fire, and the other public safety stakeholders, uh, it continues just to be a model, I think, for what we hope to see in both, uh, community-oriented policing, as well as, uh, community support in combating crime, so, uh, I think this community continues to do great things, I also wanted to give a shout-out to staff, uh, in the consent calendar today was a local hazards, uh, plan, as well as the, uh, safety element update, and I think that's very important, I was happy to see that, uh, in, uh, the consent calendar, uh, I was going to call it out, but, uh, I think, in the interest of expediency, I have money writing on what time we get out of this, uh, meeting, uh, so to speak, that's a joke, uh, but, uh, nevertheless, if we get out of here by eight, maybe we'll get dinner, who knows, uh, but, that being said, it's very important that we work, uh, to continue to address local hazards, and I think today, uh, local hazard mitigation, especially in light of the Eden Fire, uh, and the just biblical meteorological event that was realized, uh, in the not-too-distant past, uh, it makes it a very good time for us to go through that exercise with both the Wildland Interface, the Morris Dam, uh, the floodplains, and everything else that comes with that, so, uh, thank you, staff, for, for getting into that, I also know, many moons ago, we talked about where volunteer, uh, disaster, uh, volunteer disaster, our volunteer disaster groups, which is outlined in the current safety element meets, and I know we talked about the Community Emergency Response Team, uh, being part of the safety element, and so, uh, as we move forward with that, I hope we continue to formalize, uh, well, further formalize, rather, uh, our Community Emergency Response Team, as I think we've seen during the global pandemic, they were instrumental in providing services through their volunteerism, and not only that, uh, I think those folks were, were very much prepared for, uh, that disaster. With that being said, the city birthday, I think, uh, the city staff, again, knocked it out of the park, uh, I had many people, that's funny, knocked it out of the park, it was in their park, um, but nevertheless, I had many people come up and, and talk about how wonderful this city is, and some of them, uh, and several of them, to be very honest, are not San Dimas residents, in fact, they came here to come celebrate, because this city just does things great, and so, I think that, uh, the fact that we're not only entertaining, uh, we're catering to our residents, but we're also, uh, catering to folks that are coming from other communities, because of the excellence that's been realized through our Parks and Recreation staff is fantastic, uh, I also think that the turnout that was realized there, uh, I think was, was pretty significant, uh, I was, I was very much, uh, pleased to see how great it was to not only have the people turning out, but how many organizations that we had involved too, uh, I think that, to me, uh, just shows again how involved our community is, and I'm very grateful, uh, for all of the stakeholders that came out to that event. The last thing, uh, I'm going to talk about, uh, is that, um, it's been a very long week, uh, well, last week and a half, rather, for, uh, my day job, as, as most of you know, I work for the LA County Sheriff's Department, and as you know, uh, tragedy struck, uh, several weeks ago, when we lost three detectives, those three detectives, uh, you know, had a tragic incident, uh, and that's all I'm going to say about it, but it was very much covered in the news, uh, but, one of the things that I would request tonight, is that we close in honor of the three, as the last of the three was laid to rest today, earlier today, uh, myself, uh, in my professional capacity, as well as, uh, Mayor Bedar, city manager, Brad McKinney, and, uh, in his capacity, uh, as a, as a police sergeant, uh, Eric Weber, attended the, uh, the funeral for Deputy Victor Lemus, Detective Victor Lemus, and, uh, he was a San Dimas resident, and, uh, I would ask tonight, uh, in their honor of all three, that we close this meeting in honor of Joshua Kelly Eklund, Detective William Osborne, and Detective Victor Lemus, may they rest in peace, their service never be forgotten, and, uh, I think this is a very grateful community for all the things that they did, and, and their sacrifice, serving, uh, the community and the county of Los Angeles, and this city. Thank you.
Councilman Weber.
Um, I will keep it short, because I think everybody's covered it, uh, I will just say that, uh, I brought my kids out to both National Night Out and to the city birthday, and they had a blast, in fact, when I was tired at city birthday and ready to go home, they told me, no, we want to stay and hand out cupcakes, so, we stayed, and they handed out cupcakes, they had a blast, so, uh, I think it goes without saying that was a, a great event, and that, uh, they had no shortage of fun there, um, and, uh, the other thing I'll touch on is, again, congratulations, Ryan, um, and I would be supportive of your motion to, to close the meeting in, uh, all three, uh, detectives' memories, that's it.
Councilman Burtakis.
Congratulations again, very, very proud to be sitting next to you, and for all of your accomplishments, um, this, the past week, I attended two public outreach meetings for parking, um, my notes are going to revolve a lot around patience, I'm going to be thanking you in advance for your patience, as we are implementing, implementing new parking procedures in our downtown municipal parking lots, I was, um, so happy about staff being there for the residents that came, we did business parking, as well as the neighborhood, uh, closest to the metro parking lot, we are there to answer your questions, address your concerns, and welcome you to be a part of those solutions, and that's what people did, they showed up, they shared what's going on, as a resident, you're the most powerful person in this community, you know things before other people do, so we welcome you coming in and telling us what's going on. going on. You've noticed that train going by, right? We're working on making it a seamless transition into passenger service, and thank you for the patience that you've had. And as our city manager said, we are working on those traffic signals, being a bit of a smoother process for us all. And then, of course, back-to-school is coming, and that's a really exciting time, but it's a time to also slow down a little bit on the streets. Schools are going to be very, very busy in the front. There's going to be drop-offs, pickups, so I'm saying thank you in advance for your patience. Last but not least, to Councilmember Vienna's point, he is so correct that we are an incredible city, and people come from far and wide to come to our events and to use our facilities. Just today, taking my son to his freshman orientation, I was by the San Dimas Recreation Center, and that pool is still packed. So we are closing up our summer season, but please, residents, non-residents, everybody, continue to sign up to use that facility. Sign up for those classes because we are San Dimas. We are awesome. We have something for everybody, and we want you all here. So thank you.
Thank you. Most of the items, as I've said in the past, it's always good to go last because everything's already been said. But the reality is that we've had a very, very busy last couple of weeks, okay? And yes, I had an opportunity. I don't, I don't call it a call it an opportunity. I want to call it an honor. I had an honor to go be able to attend one of the deputies' funerals today, and it was pretty heart-lifting to see the amount of people there. Majority of the funeral in the beginning of it was family. He has a very large family. In fact, large enough to create a football team and a half. He had nine brothers and five sisters, so you can imagine the amount of family interest was there. And then the sheriff's department, which is absolutely unbelievably large, and I think a good percentage of those guys showed up, and it was, it was uplifting. It was nice. It was an honor to be able to be there. When we talk about the things that have happened in the last week as far as community events, we talk about National Night Out, okay? I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Lieutenant Louis Serrano, who's been the acting captain in San Dimas, who, along with his staff, created and performed an unbelievable National Night Out. His crew was very, very representative. We had it at the sheriff's station. It was full, people. Interesting thing happened. I said earlier that the sheriff was there for well over an hour. He spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people, and he was in, appeared, even though he had two or three other events that night, he did not appear to be rushed in any way, shape, or form. He took his time, and he spent the time talking with anybody. Anybody who wanted to talk to him, he talked. So I want to thank and send, Ryan, since you sit at the right hand of God now, just tell him thank you very much from San Dimas. We appreciate it. Along with him was Assemblymember Cisneros. He is on kind of a break from Washington right now, so he came and he stayed well about an hour. So it was pretty neat. But I just want to reach out to Lieutenant Serrano to say, please tell your crew thank you very much. It was a great, great showing. And then naturally, the birthday barbecue. I don't think you could have got another person in that park. It was jam-packed, full. It was a, you know, it could have been very well the last music in the park for the year because it was tremendously full. People didn't go home until, didn't get off the dance floor until 9:30, and they were supposed to be out of there by nine, but the band stayed over and they played, and it was really pretty nice. So tomorrow night, being the last one, I do expect that people are going to show up and have a good time. And I'd like to take, Mr. Wasserman, thank you. Please thank your crew. The, for its last eight, 10 weeks, they've performed magnificent. Thank you very much. Okay? And I too agree that we should close in memory of the three deputies, but I would also like to mention the fact that I would also like to ask that we also close the meeting in memory of a longtime, a long-term-time city resident, Sharon Long. She passed a couple of weeks back. She's been in this community for years and years and years, very active with our Women's Wednesday Afternoon Club, and there's going to be a service for her on this coming Friday, if anyone's interested. I have the details, but the way my memory is, I'm not so sure that I can repeat them the right, so if you need them, Marjorie Green will be here. We'll be more than happy to let you know the exact details. It's over in Glendora, right? 1:00 in the afternoon in Glendora at, what's the name of the place?
Uh, the Oakdale Memorial.
Oakdale Memorial at 1:00. She was a very well-known member of the, like I said, the Wednesday Afternoon Club and many other organizations over the years. So with that being said, I will, anyone else wishing to say anything, move on? Then I will move that we close the meeting in memory of our three LA County Sheriff detectives and Sharon Long.